The occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Stillwater residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape", effectively serves to remind Stillwater residents it's important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Stillwater to plan and practice a home fire escape plan for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Stillwater Fire and Emergency Services. Thank you to Stillwater Fire Department for all that you do. I don't know if, has Sparky been around the schools? Is that back up and going yet?
Uh, next week.
Next week? Excellent.
Wednesday, Wednesday next week, we'll be back in the schools.
Excellent. Well, good to see our, I'm sure the school kids would be great, happy to see Sparky back out there.
Yes.
Great. Next up, we have Public Power Week. Several representatives from Stillwater Utilities Authority here, so I'll read this proclamation as well. Whereas the residents of Stillwater, Oklahoma place high value on local control of community services and have thus chosen to operate a community-owned electric utility, and as customers and owners of this electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility provides homes, businesses, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at competitive rates. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local residents through financial support of the general government, including public safety, transportation, parks, library, and recreation. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make the community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global, the global environment. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility will continue to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1901, when the utility was created to serve all residents of Stillwater. And whereas the Stillwater community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, proclaim the week of October 2nd through 8th, 2022, as Public Power Week to recognize Stillwater Electric Utility for its contributions to the community, and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. Please.
Good evening, Councilors. Lauren Smith, Lady Utility Director. I just want to start off with thanking you for allowing us the opportunity to serve this great community that we all live in. We are your proud public power providers. We have a great saying that says we support Main Street, not Wall Street, and that couldn't be further from the truth. And so, I also want to thank the expert team of employees that make up the electric utility. Without their 24-hour commitment to keeping the electricity flowing, our system would not be what it is. We have several line workers here this evening, but we also are fortunate to have generation and transmission engineering and administration. So, it takes a culmination of very hard work from all those folks that are dedicated to this utility. So, thank you for letting us serve.
Thank you, Lauren, and thanks for, your team members for being here tonight. You know, we talk a lot about budgets and projects and that sort of thing in our meetings, but the guys that we've got here tonight are the folks who actually go out and execute that and keep the lights on and do the work that we spend a lot of time talking about. So, we appreciate that work.
Absolutely, and they're true experts.
Gentle reminder of last February.
Don't even talk about it.
Yeah, but it's, it's good for the community to be gently reminded that these are the individuals that while we were at home, were out doing that frontline work, so. And is that your truck that's parked outside of City Hall? I did not touch it, but I did look. Really cool truck, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a recognition of our finance department. Do we have a proclamation or a, I don't have a, something to read. I would love to recommend, recognize our finance department. I know, please do.
Say a few words, because it's a brag moment. So, we have received our 40th consecutive award for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So, that is something to be celebrated. It's not an easy task to be awarded such thing. It's quite a process to be qualified for the award. And so, for us to have received that year after year for 40 consecutive years, it just really goes to show the longstanding commitment that the City of Stillwater has for accuracy, accountability, and transparency in financial reporting. So, I have brought my team, because it's not possible without the people, and so I have brought the finance team with me. They're a fantastic group that shows up every day and brings excellence to the, to their work. So, I would like to take a moment to recognize each one of them. All right, and I'll just ask for you to stand when I call your name. Alicia Evans, Diana Aldridge, Hayden Bonine, Jared Dewan, John McLennie, Kristen Holloway, and then Michelle Wilhelm and Tiffany Garten weren't able to join us this evening.
Well, I think it's, it's absolutely, I'm glad that you all were able to be here tonight and for us to talk about 40 consecutive years of recognition. Those of us who don't know very much about Municipal County, but have learned some over the years, recognize how difficult just the system itself is, and to be able to operate and to execute the, all of the various complications of municipal finance, not only correctly, but in a way that is recognized in this way for 40 years. I mean, I think that is a, just an excellent testament to our community and an excellent benefit to our community that they're able to have the faith and the trust in our finance department that whether we're making good decisions about where that money goes, it's definitely going where it's supposed to, or where it's, where we say it's going to. So, thank you so much for being here and for the work that you do in the finance department.
I would second that. I'd just say, as someone who works with financial things in my real job, it is not the most visible or the sexiest area to be in, but it is so critical that we are good stewards of the public funds and that they know that our, our accounting is accurate and is transparent, and so I commend all of you all on the job you do each day.
Yep. Let's, let's do a picture, if that's okay. That concludes the proclamation portion of our program tonight, and we will move on to the consent docket. I will note that we have a memo from staff to remove item F from the consent docket. That item will need to be brought back at a later time when some more paperwork is brought forth. So, is there a motion on the remaining items of the consent docket?
Move to approve the consent docket, exclude item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent minus item F. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us down to public hearings. Item seven. 7A is receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone property at 603 West High Point Drive from Commercial Shopping to Commercial General. This is CC-22-177. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Ms. Porter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jaclyn Porter, the City Planner, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. First item being presented is a map amendment located at 603 West High Point Drive from Commercial Shopping to Commercial General. Here's an aerial map of the subject property. It is located off of West High Point Drive on a private access over to the east to reach the property. Here's an aerial map of the subject property. The south portion of Boomer Lake is located to the north. Cimarron Plaza is, is to the east and to the west along Boomer is Baker Animal Hospital. This is a street view looking south at the subject property. 603 West High Point is currently zoned commercial shopping with similar zoning surrounding it, public zoning to the north for the Boomer Lake area. This slide contains images of the future land use map of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Future land use maps are used to forecast desired uses in the community at the time of the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is proposed to be commercial with public located to the east. The applicant is seeking a rezoning to increase marketability for a wide range of permitted uses by right to correlate with the possible uses for the current structure on the property. The applicant is present tonight. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Counselors? No questions? This time, I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing, and Jaclyn, let us know what the, what the Planning Commission recommends.
Planning Commission recommends approval, a vote of three to zero.
Counselors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to item 7B. Receive public comment regarding a request for a text amendment to Chapter 23, Article 7, Division 2, as it pertains to signs in commercially zoned districts. CC-22-176.
All right, thank you.
We had good notice?
Yes, we did.
We did.
All right. This next item being presented is a proposed text amendment to the sign code, specifically the commercial zoning districts in our sign code. The proposed amendment was developed by the city staff by a request of the Board of Adjustment to address a reoccurring variance request by businesses in the community. Since the beginning of 2020, 57 variances have been requested. Of those 57, 12 of them have specifically been concerned with the number of signs in a commercial district. That's approximately 21%. Here, 2020, three of the 21 variances requested were for commercial district signs. In 2021, four out of the 18 variance requests were for commercial signs. And just in this year alone, five of the 18 applications so far have been for commercial district signs. The recommended text amendment is to Chapter 23, Article 7, Division 2, District Sign Regulations 197 through 200, of the Land Development Code covering office, commercial shopping, commercial business, and commercial general. The intent of the proposed changes are to keep the integrity of the current code, but make the minor adjustments to meet the community needs at this time. This will create less of a hardship on businesses in a commercial zone district. The proposed amendment is to create a continuity in each district with an adjustment to allow a wall sign on each side of the structure, with exceptions to multiple businesses that share an exterior wall, to one sign per business. Are there any questions for staff?
Do you have a red line or something that shows specifically the changes that have been proposed?
I can get you some.
I don't think I have one.
Just hold on one moment. You can actually, the, if approved, the ordinance is on for first read. It's ordinance number 3504 included in the packet, and it will outline the specific changes to the provisions.
I gotcha.
I can still pull it up if you want it.
It's fine.
Okay.
Nope, that's good.
But is it showing the changes, though?
It does. It's in mine there in red. Will the, the proposed changes, how many of these, I mean, in the variances that have been applied for in this, this, under the current code, I assume all of those have been granted?
Yes, everything has been approved.
And, and these changes would have covered those, so it wouldn't have required a variance in the first place?
Correct. They just would eliminate that extra set for the commercial businesses.
All right. Further questions, counselors? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item either, so I will close the public hearing. Is there a recommendation from the Planning Commission?
Yes. Planning Commission recommended approval, three to zero.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Counselors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation on this text amendment. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Jaclyn. It takes us to item eight, general orders. 8A, consider a bid award for the Husband Street Bridge Drilled Pier Project. I'm gonna let Andy tell us all about this exciting item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Andy Dorflinger. I am the Deputy Director of Projects and Construction for the Engineering Department, and this evening I'm gonna provide an update on the Husband Street Bridge project. So, in February of 2022, the City Council approved the award of a unit-priced contract to Lop Construction LLC in the amount of $1,300,000 to replace the Husband Bridge over Boomer Creek. Lot mobilized in June of 2022, demolished the existing bridge, and excavated to the footing, excavated in the footing locations to the elevation required on the plans. They were supposed to encounter bedrock when they excavated, and they didn't. So, we requested additional geotech investigations, and what they found was the rock was actually 25 to 30 feet deeper than was shown on their report. So, I have that here for you to look at. You can see on the top, that's in April 2015, the rock was found at 12 and 1/2 feet deep from the, from the road, and now it's 36 feet deep, or 43 feet deep. So...
Just to be clear, the way you said that made it sound like the rock had gotten deeper over time.
No, it didn't move. It didn't move, so we don't have a good explanation for this. So, we did the required testing. So, what they do in the field is they take a drill rig out there, and they actually drill into the rock and take samples. And what you'll see here is the report that was provided to the geotech engineer that was collected out there on site, and you can see in April of 2015, they found limestone. But when we were digging for it, as the contractor dug for it, there was no limestone. So, we immediately went out there, had them drill a new boring, and collect the information, and that's where we find the shale, which is at 43, 51 feet deep. So...
Is it same firm, both sets of drillings? Because it looks like it's the same logo on the bottom of the storm.
It's the same company? It is.
Do they have an explanation for how they missed it by a couple dozen feet?
No, they didn't provide a good one. As far as we know, we don't know the root cause of the error, but it is in fact an error. So...
Yeah, I mean, one of them, they found limestone, the second one's they found shale. Those are, I'm not a geologist, those are different types of rock.
They're very different-looking materials, so, you know, it's very hard to understand why this happened. We excavated the whole entire area, you know, maybe they, we talked a little bit about it, they were like, well, maybe there was a boulder. Well, we would have hit a boulder if we were digging there, so I don't have a good explanation right now. Like I said, I've asked for a root cause of the problem, but...
Was the old bridge not seated on some sort of...
That's correct. One of the problems that we were having was the old bridge was moving, and that's why we had to remove it. So, you know, we, we base things on what field data gets collected. So, in this case, we thought we had rock nearby or within a few feet. The movement on the bridge would lead you to believe that that wasn't the case, and this shows that it wasn't, so...
So, I guess my question about the old bridge is, like, was it supposed to have been...
Founded on the rock?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so.
But there's not another way to build a bridge.
There is another way.
Okay.
So, and actually, we're gonna go into that here in a second, so...
Sorry for getting ahead of you.
Sorry. Let me, let me advance the slide a little bit. So, we looked at two approaches to address this problem. You know, approach number one is, let's do a complete redesign. So, another approach would be to put in like a culvert, a gigantic square culvert that would have a large foundation that would spread out the load for the bridge, versus concentrating it at the abutments, which is what we have right now. Problem with that is, we already have a permit in the floodway that would change the way that the stream flows underneath the bridge, and that could have an impact, and, I mean, literally, to get that permitted, it would take a year. So, given the situation that we're facing, we're like, it'd be better to stick with the current design. So, that's why we looked at option number two, which is to change the foundation design and keep the substructure the same, or the superstructure the same. So, substructure changes, which would, we go from a foundation that was supposed to be a slab foundation that was founded on the rock, to a pier foundation, which goes down into the rock, if that makes sense. So, given the impact it's having on the community, we move forward with option number two, to put that out to bid, and that's what we're reporting on tonight.
So, there's, if we were gonna redesign it, we, it would be potentially up to a year to get a new permit?
Yeah.
For that redesign thing?
Correct.
And is there any way to temporarily replace the bridge in the meantime?
I'm not aware of a good temporary solution for a bridge.
Call the Army Corps of Engineers.
That's what I was thinking too. I was thinking GI Joe, but no, I don't think there...
We're in a pontoon bridge.
Yeah, that, that bridge on the, I don't think there's a good temporary solution for this.
So, it's either wait a year plus?
A year plus.
Then the additional construction time when we actually got the permit?
Right, right.
With that bridge out the whole time.
That's where we come, I kinda came up with the, almost a two-year delay to the project, whereas now, I think we can get it in within nine months from start of construction, so we can probably get it, there's a 60-day period that they'll need to install the piers, and then it kinda restart, resets our, our construction period.
Under the original contract?
On the original contract, so. You know, we looked at this, I looked at this from an impact to the community. If we wait a year, it's approximately $1,000,000. I looked at, the way I came up with that number was commute time addition, so the time that it's impacting residents, based on, you know, the average salary that community makes, and I also looked at fuel. And you combine those two into a million and a half a year, so I felt like it would be prudent to move forward. So, that's what we were looking at.
And what is it? Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, is the company that made the error?
Yes.
Are they providing any type of reduction in...
I'll just chime in. The geotechnical survey that the city relied on in bidding the original project, that matter's been referred to legal, and we're currently reviewing whether or not we have a claim for those damages, and it's still under review.
So...
So, what's option two?
Okay. Option two, again, is basically, we leave the, everything that's above grade, which we've already purchased, so we have bridge materials that you would normally be driving on, not the pavement, but the stuff that's directly underneath that. We would continue to use that, and we would install piers underneath the bridge. So, the problem that we had with the piers is they're very expensive, so we had to put that out to bid. So, we completed a redesign. That redesign required 12 48-inch drilled piers. The bridge superstructure, a majority of it's going to be unchanged, it's just where the piers connect to the superstructure, and I'll show that here in a moment. We issued that out to bid and advertised that per state law. We also had to add an alternate where we were, there's a water line that goes under the bridge right now, we're gonna, the piers are gonna hit that, so we're abandoning that water line and cutting and capping it for right now. And we also included an incentive payment to encourage the contractor to do this as quickly as possible, to limit the amount of delay time that we had.
What happens to the water in that water line? I assume there's a parallel?
For right now, it, it will, it, it, both areas are served.
Okay.
So, it's sufficient. Eventually, we will replace it. It's more of a water quality issue than a water quantity issue. Well, we wanna, we'll wanna drill that, but I wanted to decouple that from this project just to get the bridge back in, in functioning. This is a, the design drawings of the bridge. On the left, you can see the original design, and you can see the footing where it's a large two-foot slab. On the right, you can see the piers coming in, and they're tying into a beam. And this is kinda what the pier design looks like on both sides, so a drill rig will come out and, and drill each of these piers. So, go into the bid. As I mentioned already, it was advertised per, per the state law. There was only one bidder. It was Lop Construction LLC. Their bid amount was $1,65,950. There is an ad alternate for the water line, and that's $44,000. The total bid price was $1,109,950. The engineering estimate that we received was $417,800, and there was an ad alternate for $40,000. And the total engineering estimate was $457,800. So, one of the quick, one of the questions I immediately had is, why? Why is it so much more? So, the basis of the engineering is, it really comes from ODOT, based on drilled piers elsewhere. One of the complicating factors that we have with the Husband Street Bridge is there's a large power line utility right there by the bridge, and that's, that, that line cannot be de-energized or, or moved very economically, so they have to work around it. And because of that, they have to use special methods and materials. They have to splice the casing and splice the rebar that's within that casing, and that significantly adds time and cost to installing the bridge piers. So, right now, accepting, and then the other thing that, that drove up the cost is there's some underground utilities, like the water line and a communication line that need to be addressed as part of this project. So, right now, accepting this bid is the most, is the quickest way to get the bridge back in service. Redesign, rebidding it probably won't, because of the two-year lag, probably won't save us any money at this point.
If I could make one thing clear, is the architect that designed the bridge hired the geotech company. That was not a contractor for the City of Stillwater, and that engineer's estimate came from the same company.
From the architect?
The architect's company, yes.
So, we're getting ready to consider $1,246,000 right now, but what's the total cost of this project?
So, the original cost was 1.3, and then what we're talking about right now is 1 point, well, this slide shows the cost of what this additional amendment would cost, or additional, I guess it's actually a separate contract. So, the base bid is there, the ad alternate, the maximum incentive payment, there's a contingency that we're including on that, and then the total funding is $1,246,000 for this, for the...
Just for the... Just for the piers?
The piers.
So a total of two point five four for the bridge?
Right.
Will we have to rebid this after the piers are done, or is that, will that stay?
Right, it'll stay, the.
It's been bid and awarded?
The, the superstructure's been bid and awarded.
We started, right?
Correct, yeah, it's already started.
So, but we don't have to rebid that due to this delay?
Yeah.
That contract will hold?
And to reiterate, a lot of the structural materials for the bridge have already been purchased in Lop Construction that was awarded the original contract. So, if we rebid it and redesigned the bridge, a lot of that might not be usable, and it's paid for.
But we, but we're not required, we can, we've started, had to stop, have to add this.
Right.
Pier component, and then they'll be able to start again?
Correct, and there'll be a change order for delay charges and things like that that we're anticipating. But it, you know, it will be within the, we're anticipating it being within the.
Contingency, okay.
Back to my question, though, the, the original bid included the substructure that's not going to get built.
Correct.
Right?
So.
So what's the new total cost of the project?
So, yeah, and that, that is to be determined. We have to get the delays and that information to them. So we have new units, or I guess new quantities, that we're gonna provide them, and then they'll provide a deduct for that. There's certain things that we're not gonna do, like you're saying, like this, that, that mat foundation is no longer gonna be there. So there's gonna be some reductions in concrete. There's some reduction in some of the rebar, but then there's some new rebar to tie it together that's required. So, if that makes sense, that's still being worked out.
Okay.
We wanted to get through this stage to make sure that this, this got approved before we move forward on that.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Is it your, do you anticipate that the total of one point two four six and one point three from the original contract is the top? That it should come in, at least that's the max that we're?
Yes.
We're doing, dealing with?
I mean, otherwise, we'd have to re-advertise, yeah, I think we would, we would, yeah.
We'd anticipate there's some savings from the original bid?
There, there will be some reductions from the original bid. Now, savings is difficult for me to say because of the delay charges. So there, there is, there's obviously some, some things that we need to work out with LOP. So, I can't, I can't honestly.
Sure.
Commit to that yet.
Obviously, this is so out of the ordinary, it's extraordinary to have something like this happen. It just, it's so, it's so challenging right now with costs increasing all the time to not get things done quickly. It's hard. I feel like every time we're talking about projects, it's just, everything's more expensive, so.
Well, based on an error that was not ours to begin with. Right.
The other.
I mean, yeah, but I, I guess it's a question for somebody else, not necessarily Andy, but I mean, one point three out of our transportation funding is a lot of other projects that aren't gonna get done.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a big, big problem for the other stuff. Do we know, do we have a sense of what, if other stuff's gonna have to get delayed or pushed if we approve this? And do we know what that will be?
There will be a few projects that will be delayed, but I think, you know, with what we currently have planned, there's, yeah, there will be an impact, so that, you know, we, we average, prior to the, the new half cent being added, we, we average collecting about four million dollars a year. So you can tell, that's, you know, a fourth of the budget. But, on the other hand, you may end up, if, if we go back and go through the whole redesign process and find out piers are the least expensive one, you would have had to do this anyways.
Sure.
If we go back through and do a complete redesign, I can't guarantee you that it'll save any money. I don't, I mean, from a risk standpoint, time-wise, time is, time is a killer right now with the way things are escalating. It's not as quick as it was at the beginning of the year, but it's still happening.
Well, and with cost increases, we discussed this, we beat it to death. With the cost increases that we're currently experiencing, if we rebid the whole project, it could come in substantially higher. We just don't know.
Well, with materials bought and, I mean.
Yeah, but it's just that, you know, being able to plan for it, I mean, the problem is, we've torn out the bridge already. I mean, that's, that's really the issue here.
Right.
If we could, if we could buy time with the bridge still being there, we could deal with, you know, it gives you the chance to at least look at the finances and figure out where to take the money from, and it gives you more flexibility. We don't have any flexibility because we've got a major thoroughfare in our community that's closed, and, and I hate having to make important decisions under that kind of, you know, with that kind of pressure, because you, you don't get good decisions generally when you're dealing with stuff that you can't, you know, factors that you just can't change, or that you can't be, work around, and, so it's, it's very frustrating, but it is what it is, right? I mean, there's nothing we can do about that short of the Corps of Engineers coming and giving us a pontoon bridge.
Right, right.
For use, which still, I think, we probably, the school district probably wouldn't want their buses driving over that anyway, so.
Probably not.
Yeah. I don't like this one. This one's no fun.
No, it hasn't been fun at all for us. It's definitely been a challenging project.
Okay, so, councilors, further questions regarding the substance of what we're dealing with here? I guess we can move on to what your actual recommendation is.
Sure. So staff recommend, recommends award of a unit price contract to LOP Construction LLC for their low bid to install the drilled piers for the Husband Street Bridge for an amount not to exceed one million one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. We also recommend approval, approval of a budget amendment to appropriate one million two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from the Transportation Sales Tax Fund to the Husband Street Bridge Drill Pier Project. We'd like to authorize, like you'd authorize the city manager to sign the contract documents, and then authorize total expenditures not to exceed one million two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which includes an incentive payment and contingency funds.
I did have that question.
Okay.
And I know you mentioned this for a second, but what's, what's, I mean, is the incentive just based on time?
It is, so.
How quickly they can do it?
Yeah, how quickly they can do it. We've seen this a lot in, in emergency projects. They, basically, there's a forty-five days in the contract right now. If they can do it in thirty days or less, they get the full amount of the incentive. If they can't get it done within forty-five days, there's a penalty that gets applied up to a certain point. It's just like liquidated damages. So we're trying to encourage them to do it as quickly as possible.
And how much was that incentive again?
It was twenty-two thousand five hundred.
I assume the penalty is capped at twenty-two thousand five hundred the other way, or is it?
No, that side is just like LDs, so if you start, if they start extending the contract, you know, if it goes to ninety days, then obviously they're impacting the whole community, so there's a penalty there.
Okay. Councilors, what do you want to do?
You know, as someone who lives over on that side of town, and that's a main thoroughfare for me, I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approves the staff, staff, to approve the staff's recommendation on this project. Please vote. That is approved with a vote of five to zero.
All right.
Thank you for your hard work on this, and it's been, just as frustrating for you.
Yes.
Worse. That takes us to item nine, resolutions. Resolution number CC dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven. This is a resolution acknowledging city council authorization and approval for the submission of an application for fiscal year 2023 Reconnecting Communities Pilot Grant Program administered by the United States Department of Transportation for a planning grant to fund the study of a project to eliminate barriers to active transportation and other opportunities to improve community connectivity through the active transportation infrastructure in the city of Stillwater. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brady Moore, Chief Performance Innovation Officer. Hopefully, we'll bring up the mood in the room a little bit with this one. I'm here on behalf of engineering planning to present a grant opportunity that was identified by our grants manager, Shelley Kreins. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Discretionary Grant Program through the U.S. Department of Transportation, and funded it with one billion dollars over the next five years. This is the first federal program dedicated to reconnecting communities that were cut off from economic opportunities by transportation infrastructure. And as you know, Highway fifty-one, or our Sixth Avenue, is a major highway that runs through Stillwater and basically divides our city by north and south. Safely crossing Highway fifty-one can be a challenge for pedestrians and cyclists. With the reconstruction and widening of Highway fifty-one in the coming years, we know that crossings of the busy highway will be even more challenging. So staff is proposing a planning grant for a project that will build on top of the work that was done in our Sixth Avenue corridor study last year. We would like this planning grant to be focused on two major components. The first is to focus on implementation of active transportation crossings on Highway fifty-one. This would include identifying possible locations for like a pedestrian overpass or underpass in heavy traffic areas like the Westwood Elementary School and our Duck Street downtown rail corridor area. In addition, the study would take the next step in designing the active transportation components in the intersections that were identified in the Sixth Avenue corridor study. The second component of this grant project would be the creation of a citywide active, active transportation map. This map would identify our current network and also our plans for future active transportation connections and trails in our city. We believe this would be an important asset, especially with our Transportation Advisory Committee that's being established with our new sales tax, that they could use as new road constructions are allocated and planned for, to make sure that these active transportation components are included in the design phase. The amount that the staff is requesting for this planning grant is two hundred and fifty thousand, consisting of two hundred thousand dollars for the federal share and a twenty percent city match of fifty thousand dollars. The matching funds have I been, have been identified in the contingency fund. Resolution CC two zero two-two dash two seven is before you tonight, authorizing staff to submit this grant application. I have a recommended motion, but I will pause now for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Brady. Councilors?
Is the two hundred and fifty thou, so two hundred thousand and then fifty thousand matches that the maximum amount allowed for the ask with this grant opportunity?
No, it's not. It's just, Monty worked with us on this, and he's not here to present tonight, obviously, as, as he retired, but that was what he thought was a good budget, you know, looking at other plans that we've had like this.
Is there funding available for actual construction of some of these projects in the same billion dollars?
I'm with you. I'm, I'm ready for implementation more than planning, and I, that's what this is. This is, part of this is going to be implementing, it's that next step from taking like a concept to something we're ready to implement.
Well, yeah, so I would assume we would have to have something like this before they're gonna award any kind of implementation grants?
Correct.
We'd have to have this place?
Yeah, and, and with this being a billion dollars over the next five years, hopefully, if we get awarded this, we get to work on it, hopefully, we can reapply, and it will support the work of this planning grant.
I would just encourage us to be as aspirational as possible in this grant application, looking at how these federal agencies are awarding right now and listening in on some of their conversations. I think they're really wanting us to reach big, so, yes, Sixth Street, and yes, but like, how do you make it even pop even more? I think that's, it's a challenge for our smaller communities, I think, to do that, so really, digging deep and reaching high, I think, are really important. It's, I mean, a great opportunity for us as a community, with all the conversations that we have from time to time about active transportation, to really kind of tie it together and have a plan, I think, would be wonderful.
Yeah, and, and just as a, another building on that, Amy, we, or sorry, Councilor Jaloski, is, you know, we're gonna be hopefully coming to you with some good news on another grant in this world too, that we've applied for with ODOT, for the TA funding.
Anything further? Your recommendation, I assume, is that we approve the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you so much, councilors.
Motion to adopt resolution number CC dash two zero two-two dash twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. Good luck on the grant application. That takes us to item ten, ordinances. We have ordinance thirty, on first read, ordinance thirty-five oh four. This is an ordinance amending Stillwater City Code by amending chapter twenty-three, Land Development Code, Article Seven, Signs, Division Two, District Sign Regulations. This was discussed in our earlier public hearing. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Move to advance ordinance thirty-five oh four.
Or the second reading?
Second.
A motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Please vote. We voted five to zero. Ordinance thirty-five oh four will be advanced to second reading. Item B is ordinance thirty-five oh nine, an ordinance rezoning tract of land located at or near fourteen oh seven and eighteen oh nine East Burris Road and fifteen ninety twenty North Jardoe Road from agricultural A to large lot, single-family RSL. This was from our prior meeting. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance number three five oh nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. We voted five to zero. Ordinance thirty-five oh nine is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance thirty-four ninety-six corrected. This is a corrected ordinance, closing and easement, located in the northeast quarter of section thirty-five, township twenty north, range two east of the Indian Meridian. City of Stillwater, Payne County, Oklahoma, on property located on North Rogers Drive, south of Richmond, adjacent to North Rogers Drive and Parkview Estates. Section ten, and repealing all ordinances to the contrary.
Motion to adopt ordinance three four nine six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to adopt ordinance thirty-four ninety-six corrected. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. Reports from the officers and boards. Ms. Carnley?
Just one quick announcement this evening. Legal intern Ashlyn Garrus has passed the bar exam, and she is joining my staff as an assistant city attorney, and I look forward to introducing her to everyone in an upcoming council meeting, so. We're very proud of her and happy to have her on staff.
Fantastic news. Good for her. Congratulations.
Yes.
Mr. McNichol?
You know, usually, these are pretty positive.
Yes.
This probably goes in the category of the bridge. And again, a lot of discussion here before we take this action, but we find that throughout the remainder of October, due to, there will be a temporary reduction in waste management services due to staffing shortage. Not garbage, but residents will need to drop off glass and yard waste at the collection center. These items will not be picked up for the month of October. To help customers through October, they are not limited to one truckload per day, as they have been in the past. And I want to remind people that trailers are still not allowed at the convenience center due to safety purposes. It's just not big enough to get them in there. The issue here has been, we've been working staff awful hard, and Matt's here could speak to this if you have additional questions, but they've been paid overtime, they've worked days off. There have been all kinds of things that we've tried to do to keep all of our services moving, and we've been able to hire additional staff, but one of the requirements is a commercial driver's license. Those are not quickly received, and we have enough folks in the process of receiving their commercial licenses that by November first, they will be on the road and we can start the service again. And I regret this, but it is, again, some of the fallout of the last three years with COVID and all of the other things that have happened, and certainly, we're not the only ones that are having trouble hiring staff.
That's unfortunate, but it's, it is what it is. So trash and normal recycling will still be picked up on normal schedule. It's just yard waste and glass collection, the once-a-month glass collection will need to be taken directly to the Convenience Collection Center, which is reopening tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Morning.
And frankly, one of the reasons that we reached this decision is that we didn't want to lose any more staff because of the amount of time we've been working them. So, hopefully, this one-month period will give us time to get our feet back on the ground and get everything back in, in normal swing of things.
Are we actively hiring in waste management right now? So.
Yes, we, we will have enough to resume service November one. How many do you, how many openings do you have right now?
I currently have five.
Just to give you an idea, and how many do you have going for their CDLs right now?
Three.
Okay. Five openings and three that are working towards, so you see the, the extent of the problem.
If you're looking for work, Waste Management's hiring.
And the benefits are outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, as earlier, we recognize the Public Utilities, the Public Power Week is October 2nd through the 8th. This year's focus is educating the next generation of public power customers. There are multiple resources and helpful tips available on the Public Power website. Some of the tips include, and these are really good, heating and cooling your home uses a lot of energy. Set your thermostat to 68 degrees in the winter and 78 degrees in the summer to save energy and money on your power bill. Unplug appliances when you aren't using them. Even when they aren't being used, they're sometimes drawing phantom power, which wastes energy. For more great information, visit publicpower.org. Also, many thanks to our great staff members who serve in the Stillwater Utilities Department. They go above and beyond every day to keep the lights on and so much more. And I have one more. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate that. Councilor Hawkins?
The Payne County Board of Commissioners issued a burn ban through October 13th. Payne County remains in a severe drought, and with the wind added, these conditions can change a controlled fire to an uncontrolled fire emergency very quickly. Please do not burn brush piles. Those piles will remain hot for several days, maybe even weeks, and history has shown that they can cause destructive wildland fires. Thank you for your understanding in this matter.
Thanks so much. Councilor Jaloski?
Just a reminder, if you've had difficulty making utility or rent payments as a result of COVID-19, the City of Stillwater and Our Daily Bread may be able to help. The Funding Assistance Program will be available until all funds are dispersed. Please go to www.r daily bread stillwater.org to apply for more information.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Stillwater Police Department invites you to join them for their annual Coffee with a Cop on Wednesday, October 5th, from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at Panera Bread Company on West Hall of Fame. Come out for a cup of coffee, have your questions answered, and get to know your officers in your neighborhood.
I think that's a great event, and I hope, you know, folks go out and take advantage of getting the chance to sit down and talk to our police department some and get to know those folks. The more interaction we have between the general public and our police officers, the better. Those are fantastic folks that serve in our police department, and I hope people take the opportunity to get to know them. I will chime in here and let you know to, that you can join us online or in person this Friday, October 7th, at 9:30 a.m., right here in council chambers for Stillwater Fire Department pinning ceremony. This ceremony will be to pin the new Fire Marshal, Thomas Tharp, who was here this evening with Sparky. He served the city for many years and was most recently our deputy fire marshal, and will be moving up to fire marshal here for the city of Stillwater. The ceremony will be on our City of Stillwater YouTube channel and also television channels AT&amp;T U-verse 99 and Suddenly Channel 14. Congratulations to Fire Marshal Tharp. When was that again? That is Friday at 9:30 a.m. October 7th is Friday. We have nothing else on the agenda for the city council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. We vote a five to zero. The Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for October 3rd, 2022. We have first up on the consent docket, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. We vote a five to zero. The consent docket is approved. Takes us down to general orders. Item 5A, consider authorizing the purchase of eight new waste management vehicles to replace eight used vehicles, and Matt Faulkner is going to tell us about that.
Good evening, trustees. Matt Faulkner, Waste Management Director. I'm here tonight to speak regards about our buyback program for the Waste Management Department and the proposal for eight new vehicles. The Waste Management Department operates under a buyback agreement with Carolina Environmental Systems for residential refuse vehicles and roll-off refuse vehicles. The agreement provides for an option to sell the trucks at established prices provided the vehicle meets the vendor's terms and conditions at the end of a 36-month period. Currently, seven residential vehicles and one roll-off vehicle are approaching the 36-month time period. After conducting an extensive cost analysis, it is recommended to replace these eight vehicles. The proposed new residential vehicles and roll-off vehicles will have a complete three-year warranty, which will reduce repair cost and downtime. A quote submitted to the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract, SW197, by United Engines meets all the critical vehicle specifications. Purchase of this equipment under the Master Equipment Lease Program, our lease-purchase agreement with Bank of America, sets annual payments of principal and interest of approximately $740,000 for five years, with an option of early payoff in three years. The Waste Management Fund is projected to have adequate funding available for these lease payments. Any questions?
Trustees? All right. Recommendation for us?
I do have a recommendation. I have a motion to authorize the purchase of eight new waste management vehicles and replace eight used vehicles as follows. Lease purchase of seven new residential refuse vehicles and one new roll-off refuse vehicle from United Engines off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract, SW197, at an initial partial price of $3,495,000. Enter into a buyback agreement with United Engines for the option to sell the eight new vehicles after three years. Exercise the buyback option for the seven used residential vehicles and one used roll-off vehicle, and apply the funds received from the buyback option to pay off the remaining balance of approximately $848,238 to Bank of America, and authorize the general manager to sign all related documents.
Thank you, Matt. Trustees?
Does the buyback option, just out of curiosity, the 848K that we still owe, does the buyback option cover that?
Yes, so after that three years, when we, that buyback option will cover our remaining balance.
Okay.
This is basically just a continual rolling cost we have in these vehicles.
Yes, it is, and the way it works out after the three-year period, and we buy it back, it just, it basically prevents us from having increased maintenance costs for the automated systems. Actually, it works for all of our refuse vehicles.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation. Please vote. We vote a five to zero. That's approved. Thank you, Matt, and welcome, welcome to the Waste Management position here.
I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to serve you guys. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Item 5B, consider a bid award to KVA Incorporated for panel boards for Kinsey and Hospital substations. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. On November 16th, 2020, the trustees approved the Sixth Avenue Transmission and Distribution Relocation Project. Since then, staff has been working with Burns McDonald to procure the long lead time materials and equipment for the project. Bid specifications and bid documents for the relay panel boards needed for the project were prepared and released. The relay panel boards consist of the cabinets and protective relay-type devices necessary to protect the new substation terminals and transmission lines. On August 31st, two bids were received and opened. The bids were then evaluated and are tabulated in the report. KVA Incorporated met all the bid specifications, making them the lowest responsible bidder. I have a motion here, but I will pause to answer any questions.
Trustees? Get your power distribution questions in now.
There you go.
What's your recommendation for us, Lauren?
Motion to award the bid for panel boards to KVA Incorporated, authorize the general manager to execute the contract in the amount of $395,786, and authorize expenditures up to $435,365.
Trustees?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Lauren. Make sure you get those engineers to measure twice.
Yes. Oh, yes.
That takes us to the end of the SUA agenda. Any reports? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. We vote a five to zero. Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening. Thank you.